We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, May 14th. Do you have any final action to report, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. There is one action to report on with respect to item number one. The City Council decided to deny Mr. Pfeifer’s application for leave to file a late claim.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, May 14th. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Aquino is absent.
If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any update on the agenda?
No update for tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will move to business from the floor. And we have one request to speak. If there’s anybody that would like to speak to us about anything that’s not on the agenda, get a blue card and hand it to the police officer to get it to us. That’d be great. Or if you want to speak on something that is on the agenda, same blue card applies. And our speaker will be Mr. Bob Holderness.
Good evening, Mayor Howell and members. Robert G. Holderness, Folsom resident, appearing this evening on Business from the Floor. I wanted to draw your attention to last month’s issue of the Sacramento Business Journal that had a headline “Rejuvenating Sacramento’s Historic Waterfront.” I don’t want to disparage my friends from Sacramento, but our waterfront is every bit as historic and as important to our community as theirs is to them. And as you know, your general plan allows for you to do the work to create a historic district along the Lake Natoma. And I encourage you in this next couple of years to take on that chore and do the work that needs to be done so we can improve the recreational opportunities for our residents on Lake Natoma. Just to remind the environmentalists in the audience, Lake Natoma is a reservoir. It’s not a pristine lake in the middle of the Sierra Nevadas. It was made by human hand in the 1950s. It’s a beautiful lake, but it is a reservoir. In addition, the reservoir happens to be located in a city, the city of Folsom. That’s where people live. And we need to be able to enhance our recreational opportunities on that lake. And I would encourage the city to roll up their sleeves and get to work on that project. And I hope that the private sector, the Chamber, the Tourism Bureau, the Economic Development Corporation, the Rotary Club, the Lions, and all the rest of them will roll up their sleeves, as we’ve done so many times in our community, to get to work on that project so that our kids can not only look at Lake Natoma, but they can actually access it so that they can enjoy it. They can go fishing on Lake Natoma without having to drive halfway to Rancho Cordova to get off at Willow Creek, without having to drive all the way to Hazel Avenue to launch a paddleboard or a kayak. And so that’s my request for the day. I hope it’s well received by all five of you, and I hope that we’ll have a chance to start doing that in the next couple of years. And I’m happy to answer any questions. I can see that Councilmember Sheldon is happy to say a word or two.
Yeah, I sure am. You can count me out, okay? I have no reason and I do desire to destroy the waterfront we have right now. There’s no reason to commercialize that. If you looked down at the bridge and saw there probably 100 kayaks down there, there’s a lot of recreation going on that little stretch. We don’t need to turn it into another commercial entity, okay? Leave it alone. We have so quick to destroy things, okay? There’s no reason. This is so phony to say you gotta have access to the river. People go down to the river all the time. Now, we’ve spent millions of dollars to put that enhancement on the river, okay? And you’re all up here crying that he had to have it for ADA. Not too many ADA people go down there, but a lot of people do go down there. It’s good. Bob, that whole thing now, I’m amazed that you’re coming now and talking about the general plan of trying to say the general plan talks to that. The general plan said that would be considered at some point in the future. There’s no qualifications to carry on and do that. That’s a typical strategy of people that want to commercialize everything in this town. For Christ’s sake, let us be natural, okay? I mean, we don’t have to make everything raise a buck. We can just enjoy nature for what it is. You say it was man-made. There are a lot of things in this world that have been man-made, but they’re historical now. I’m sorry, I’m just, I’m being frank with you, which we are frank anyways, we always are. So I’m just telling you where I’m coming from.
Steve, you’ll stop us if anybody’s going over the
I’m just about to
Not agendized line, correct?
Thank you, Mayor.
So I’m sure council will allow me a moment’s rebuttal to Councilman Sheldon’s impassioned plea.
My recommendation, Madam Mayor, is not to
I do have a right of free speech
This is not the agendized item.
And my time isn’t yet up, council. I think that’s the wrong analogy. The analogy goes like this. We provide ball fields for our young people to learn how to play soccer and football and baseball. We provide courts to learn how to play tennis and basketball. But when they get out of school and they’re moving on to another part of their life, we need to provide them the same level of opportunity on Lake Natoma. We need to provide them a boathouse. We need to provide more access to the lake so you don’t have to go to Hazel to access the lake. And that’s all I’m asking about. You’re talking about dollars, I’m talking about kids and recreation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and we have two other requests to speak. And the first will be Jennifer Lane. And then after Jennifer will be Deanna Merchant.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. I had no intention to speak tonight until I heard Bob. I’ve been a schoolteacher for 27 years at Oak Chan, and I want you to know that children need to be educated about nature here in the city of Folsom, distinctive by nature. I propose that we put a learning center, a nature center, on the city corp yard next to the river. I’ll be working on building a website tomorrow. And I mean, that’s where we need to go as a city. So Bob is right. We need to educate our children and keep them comfortable to learn about nature. There’s plenty of access to Lake Natoma. Ernie is spot on about the trail down there. So the last thing we need on Lake Natoma is commercialism. I ran for city council twice on the same issue, not to commercialize it. And I was hoping that I would be sitting next to Ernie on this council right now and we could get this job done. Just move it over, scoot it over, let the city save it with three votes. Now, it’s going to be harder. We’re going to get that army going, and I’m not talking about the Rotary or the Eagles or all these clubs that Bob’s associated with. I’m talking about regular folks, citizens that I talk to every day. So thank you for your time. Residents, heads up, it’s happening.
Thanks, Jennifer. Deanna?
Hi.
Just for the record, I goaded Deanna into coming here tonight. So please be generous.
I have pamphlets for all of you.
You can hand them to the officer at the end.
So yes, Mike coached me into coming. We are holding a second Brews for Bug at the Folsom Tap House for my son. It has cystic fibrosis.
You can do this, we promise not to bite.
Okay.
And I won’t let her in a yell at you.
Thank you. I’m not used to this. Going to like the state capitol and being an advocate for cystic fibrosis is completely different than talking about
Pretend you’re at the state capitol.
I’m trying. Anyway, Brews for Bugs is a fundraiser that 100% of the proceeds go to the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. I don’t know if you all know what cystic fibrosis is, but I give you pamphlets that kind of explain what it is. But it’s a lung disease that’s genetic and there’s no cure for it. And it affects 30,000 kids in the U.S. and 70 worldwide. Cystic fibrosis is considered a rare disease, so there’s no federal funding. So people like me who have kids that have cystic fibrosis, we raise money. Last year was our first year doing it at the Folsom Tap House. My dear friend Stacy owns it, and we put it on, and we raised $8,000. So we’re doing it again this year, and we’re hoping to raise 20. That’s my little guy. He did this. He figured out what his disease is and realized that his life expectancy is only at 23-years-old. And he wants to do more. So he came to us and said, hey, Mom, how can I raise more money? How can we find a cure for this? What can I do? And he’s like, my family likes to drink. We don’t, we drink socially. Sorry, that came out wrong. But we
And I’m going to assume you mean you and your husband as opposed to your son.
Yes, you know. I’m totally kidding. But we get together and we celebrate life. Everything that we have, we celebrate. It’s the milestones, the six-month birthdays. You know, we take everything, a lot of people take it for granted, and we celebrate it all. It’s the little things. But he said, look, can we do something special? And so we came up with Brews for Bug. Bug is our nickname for him. And it started off great. We put it together in eight weeks. He wanted to do it for his birthday last year, and this year it kind of didn’t work for his birthday this year, so we kind of scooted it out a little further until July 13th. But it’s the same concept. We have breweries coming, we have wineries coming. There’s going to be food auctions and stuff. And Mike was like, come talk about it at the city council so you all know what great community you guys are. You guys raised so much money last year for it, and we’re hoping to raise twice as much this year for him and for the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. So I would love your guys’ support on this whole thing, but I hope I did it okay.
No, you’re fine.
If you have any questions, please let me know. I mean, I don’t know. I mean, cystic fibrosis is not well-known out there. Like I said, it only affects 30,000 kids. And I think here in Sacramento, we have 12 kids that it affects in general, and you have one living with you right now. So I mean, he’s, yeah, I mean, I don’t know what else to say, so.
Okay, so I’ll say it. So this event is July 13th this year at Folsom Tap House from 11:00 to 3:00, so I assume that’s a weekend?
It is, it’s a Saturday.
Okay, so the tickets are, full access ticket is $40, a chow-down ticket is $25. There’s local breweries and wineries, silent auction, and donations from local businesses, games, and prizes. And you can purchase tickets at passion.cff.org/brewsforbug.
And then it loose seals and stuff. We have them hanging up. You’ll see these cute little things everywhere in Folsom. You guys have been great about it. And then the month of May is the Cystic Fibrosis Awareness Month. So each, if you buy them your tickets this month, it’s only 35.
Okay.
Did I do okay?
You did great.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know, I’ll definitely be there, and I’ll put this on my social media platforms as well for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, guys. Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Great job.
That concludes our Business from the Floor. Next, we have scheduled presentations. And the first one is proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of May as Bike Month. And if I could have Tony Powers, Beverly Newman, and Michael Burkhardt from Faba meet me down front. I kind of wish we’d already done this because we’re going to talk about the mayor’s ride that happened the other day. So this proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 2019 as May is Bike Month. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Folsom scenic beauty. And whereas Folsom’s trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic, health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas the month of May is an opportunity to celebrate the power of the pedal and enjoy the many benefits of cycling. And whereas anyone who lives or works in the greater Sacramento region is encouraged to join the 2 million mile challenge and log their miles for the entire month of May on the mayisbike month.com website. And whereas on Thursday, this would be last Thursday, Folsom celebrated its annual mayor’s ride from the store in Folsom to the state capitol for the Capitol Bike Fest. And whereas the purpose of Bike Month is to bring more visibility to cycling as a viable form of transportation, to help decrease automobile traffic, improve air quality, improve health, and promote safe bicycling commuting. And whereas the city Folsom General Plan and Bikeway Masco Plan outline a goal to develop bicycling as a recreational and commuter mode of transportation. And whereas the city of Folsom has recognized as a bicycle-funded community by the League of American Cyclists. Now therefore, I, Terry Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Bike Month and invite the community to participate in local bicycling events. I encourage everyone to help improve air quality, reduce congestion, and improve their health by riding a bike to work or school during the month of May. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2019. Thank you. So I don’t know who wants to take this.
Okay, how about the secret question? Are you riding, Mayor?
A, it was last Thursday, and B, the answer was no.
She was there, though.
I was there at 7:30 in the morning, even though I got home from DC at 11:30 the night before. And I asked, and there was probably 200 people that rode at least. Tony was there, as always. But remember, Steve Miklos started this event. So I asked Steve Miklos to raise his hand from the audience. And guess what? He wasn’t there.
Want you to shed a word?
And our next scheduled presentation is a presentation by Sacramento County Area Council of Government, SECOG, in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Program.
Thank you, Mayor Howell.
Are you SECOG tonight?
I’m not. I’m just here to introduce and set the screen properly for our wonderful guest tonight from SECOG, Dov Kaden, and he’s going to go through a presentation on the regional housing needs allocation process.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dov Kaden, and I work at the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SECOG. We’re the regional government that serves the cities and counties in the Sacramento region. Of course, Folsom is one of those. I’m here to talk about the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. But before I do, just
Oops. I pressed the forward arrow.
We had this issue. There we go. Let’s see.
Can use the clicker if preferred. Maybe it’s at the end already. All right. Okay, so some context setting first here. I know I’m not breaking any news, but plain and simple, we haven’t been able to build enough housing to keep up with demand across the state of California. You see some phrases being thrown around in the news sometimes, boom cycle, something like that. But even in this current upswing, we’re actually building about as much housing as we did in the troughs of previous recessions. Our statewide housing shortfall is somewhere in the range of 3.5 million homes, which is actually equal to the shortfall in the other 49 states combined. So we know we are in a pretty big hole on housing, and we need to plan and build for more of it. So RENA is a state-mandated planning process that has been around in some form since around 1969. And the basic premise is to ensure that we are zoning enough land to house all economic segments of the community. So every eight years, SECOG and regional governments like SECOG will get a regional number from the state, which we then distribute to each city and county in our region. And when you get your number, you then need to demonstrate in the housing elements of your general plan how you have enough land zoned at four different income categories to actually accommodate that number. And the state actually then reviews your housing element to ensure that you are doing that appropriately. It’s actually the only element of your general plan that is reviewed and certified by the state. So that’s the big picture of RENA. This slide here is showing the part of the process that SECOG is responsible for, and it’s the part of the process that we’re in right now, which is taking, again, the regional determination from the state and then allocating it to each of our cities and counties, and then further out, and then further splitting it up into four income categories. So we do that by taking the proportion of the region’s growth that we assume in our long-range plan, which is called our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And then we multiply that proportion by the regional determination that we get from the state every eight years. And that gives us a total RENA number for each jurisdiction across the region. The biggest step in this process is to then further divide each jurisdiction’s total RENA into each of the four income categories. And the four income categories are on the far right there. There are very low income, low income, moderate income, and above moderate income. And they’re based upon a percentage of area median income there. So for example, area median income in Sacramento County is $80,000 around there for a four-person household.
Okay, and these numbers are based not necessarily in what the median income is in Folsom, but what it is in the county?
Yeah, so area median income is a county-based metric. So across all of Sacramento County, AMI is around $80,000 for a four-person household. Yeah. So for example, above moderate income is 100, everything above 120% of that. So $96,000 and above would be an above moderate income household if you’re a four-person household. So that blue arrow is really the crux of the RENA methodology. And in particular, what jurisdictions are typically most interested in here is the very low and the low-income categories, which together they constitute what we call the affordable categories or the lower-income categories. And that is because when you show how you can accommodate your RENA in the sites inventory of your housing element, the lower-income categories have to be accommodated on higher-density sites. So this is based on an assumption that’s obviously underwriting all of RENA law, that denser housing types are more affordable. Now, we know that’s not always true, right? So it’s more of a necessary-not-sufficient condition, but it does generally hold up that affordable housing is multifamily housing. So your above moderate income numbers that you get as a part of your RENA, you can use single-family zone sites to accommodate those. But as you move towards the right there, as you get towards the lower-income categories, the state is looking for higher densities in your zoning to accommodate it. So for the lower-income categories, we’re typically talking around 30 units an acre. And it’s worth noting here that 30 units an acre does not necessarily mean an extremely large building, right? So the average fourplex in the SECOG region, existing today, fourplexes, is on a 4,500-square-foot lot. So if you multiply that out, that’s actually around 40 units an acre. So just again, just to reiterate this point, that 30 units an acre, not necessarily huge apartment complexes, it can be small-scale multifamily. So there’s a variety of things that SECOG is required to think about by the state. And when we develop the RENA methodology, the RENA objectives that are on the screen here can be thought about as the overall framing policies that really underpin our whole process. We need to demonstrate to the state, as a part of our process, how our RENA methodology is proactively furthering each of those objectives on the screen. So increasing housing supply and mix of housing types, we’re going to inherently do that as a part of any methodology. We don’t think a ton about that one. So promoting infill equity in the environment, and that environment portion now has explicit language in state statute that ties us to our greenhouse gas reduction targets. So those are things that we’re thinking about as well. Jobs-housing balance, this is no longer just about the balance of total jobs, oops, and total jobs and total housing units in each jurisdiction, but then also jobs-housing fit. So the relationship between low-wage jobs and units that are affordable to low-wage workers. Regional income parity, so this is this idea that over time, the state is looking for jurisdictions to be trending and moving towards a similar number of lower-income households to try to avoid concentrations of poverty and things like that. And then finally, a brand-new objective, affirmatively furthering fair housing objective, or AFFH, which is about overcoming past patterns of segregation, really opening up areas of high opportunity, so places that have great access to jobs, great school districts, really allow children to thrive, really opening up those areas to all economic segments of the community so that, you know, if you can’t afford a $600,000 house, you still are able to live in the community and take advantage of those opportunities.
Oh, joy, just we needed another acronym.
Yes, yeah. State government is a lot of acronyms in there. So just to highlight that last one, you will see that one again. That is, in addition to being in RENA law, it’s also enshrined into housing element law. So as you are preparing your housing elements over the next couple of years, that is something that the city of Folsom will need to be demonstrating to the state that they are furthering fair housing. So just a heads-up on that. So we’ve been working with your staff monthly over the past eight months or so to devise a RENA methodology that furthers those objectives that we just went over in a fair way. Our next big milestone is in August, when the SECOG board will release a menu of methodologies for public comment. And then HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, will review all of those methodologies, make sure that they are meeting state law. And then in October, the SECOG board will adopt a final methodology, and at that point, you’d be off to the races updating your housing elements and turning that in in 2021.
Before we go too much further, when are we going to get the numbers?
So
You know, because based on what I’m hearing, my concern is that the number’s going to be gargantuan, and I’m not really sure, you know, as an example, if Folsom were to be assigned 50,000 housing units. There is no land on which we could build 50,000 housing units.
So there’s two numbers to get, right? So there is the regional determination that we get from the state. We’re still, maybe I’ll address that one first and then the second part of your question later. We’re still waiting to hear what the regional determination is. I don’t have any news to break for you on that.
So I don’t understand how they expect us to do the methodologies if we don’t know what the number is.
Yeah, it’s difficult. So in August is statutorily when they’re obligated to get it to us. We’ve been talking through the methodologies with staffs in terms of ideas, and then using an example determination, you know, recognizing that
Yeah, but it’s pie in the sky till you get the number.
Correct, yeah. So we talk about it, again, just kind of abstractly in terms of ideas. Do these data sources make sense? Does this like line of thinking make sense? And then obviously, once we get the number, and ideally we get that a little bit before August, so that we can actually get more meaningful input from our jurisdictions on what the methodology should look like given that number. But yeah, just to speak to that idea, all indications are that the number is going to be significantly higher this cycle than it was last cycle. And there’s a variety of reasons why that is the case. There’s been some changes to state statute for how they do that calculation, but also we’re just in a very different housing time than we were eight years ago, right? So for example, our vacancy rate in the depths of the recession about eight years ago was approaching 10% for the region. So we actually had a downward adjustment in our regional determination from the state because we assumed that some of that housing need would be taken care of by folks backfilling vacant units and getting back down to a more healthy vacancy rate of 5%.
And that’s great regionally, but that was not the circumstance here.
I’m not sure what your vacancy rate was in Folsom.
Was nowhere near 10.
Yeah. But anyway, it was to Folsom’s advantage because we had a downward adjustment in our total number from the state because of that. Now, we’re in a much tighter housing market. You know, obviously, everyone knows that here. We have something like 2.5% vacancy rate across the region. It’s probably even lower here, to your point. So the state is going to give us actually an upward adjustment to account for that. So just that vacancy rate question alone, we’re looking at a pretty sizable flip from last cycle. So we know the number is going to be much higher. We don’t know how much. We’ll obviously let your staff know as soon as we know. But we’re working on a variety of things at SECOG to provide our member agencies with the assistance that they’re going to need to address those numbers when they do come. So we put, for example, together a housing policy toolkit last December, which provides a menu of policy changes that are actually pre-approved by the state for a planning grant program through Senate Bill 2, Senate Bill 2 Planning Grants. And so we’re working with Folsom and other jurisdictions to see if we can get some money to help plan for housing. And then we’re also fighting to get some additional planning funding from the governor’s budget, which is in, it just released their May revise. But we’re hoping to get some additional planning money to, again, help Folsom plan and other jurisdictions plan for that higher number once it comes.
Maybe this is more of a question for Pam, but Maybe this is more of a question for Pam, but at what point, you know, given that the article that I read in the Bee this morning, I'm not quite sure why we weren't mentioned in there, given the number of units that we have under construction as we sit here. When do we get credit for those nearly 1,000 units?
They will be, some of them will be credited now, in the current cycle, when we demonstrate what we've achieved under the current target. And then we'll have a new target, and some of those units that are not yet permitted and occupied will be counted towards the next cycle. So they'll be split up based on the phase of construction that they're in.
Okay.
Yeah, so this RENA cycle that we're talking about developing the methodology for, it's for 2021 through 2029. So everything, yeah, as Pam mentioned, everything under construction right now is credited towards the previous cycle. If it's still under construction while you're preparing your housing element, you can count that.
Okay.
So that was the extent of my presentation.
I have a question.
Again, in October, that is when you will have your final number, hopefully, from the Board of SAICOG.
So my question is also probably for a combination of you and Pam. What are the, what are like the major levers you can pull to achieve these goals, assuming that they're large ones? And in the thought exercises you've been doing, what's different than what has been used in the past that you've posited?
Yeah, and I'll pull up, oops, pull the objectives up. So many of these are similar to last time. So last cycle, the objectives were similar. The difference was that further word is new, and it's a higher legal threshold. So what we could do, what we did last time is we considered many of these, and then the eventual methodology we adopted really only focused on the regional income parity idea. We talked about other options, but that was what we settled on. That won't slide this time. And because the state is reviewing it, and because we're, there's litigation risk, we need to make a good-faith effort to proactively further each one of these. So some of those, I think what I would say is, the housing planners' meetings that we've been having with staff, it looks like the three big ones that are being emphasized from those meetings are the jobs-housing balance, regional income parity, and the affirmatively furthering fair housing. So those bottom three objectives are probably what seem to be what's focused the most in terms of the methodology. But we have an obligation to further each one of these.
But at the end of the day, Mike, I think it's important, having lived through this a couple of times already, what some of the states, the changes to state law have included dramatic increases in the density. I want to say the last go-around was the minimum density that you had to allow was double what ours had previously been. So that's the kind of things I'm concerned about.
I mean, that's the obvious, like, mathematical way to achieve some additional housing capacity. I was just, like, regional income parity.
Yeah.
What does that really mean? Because I can imagine somebody sitting in this audience going, okay, great, I want to make the same amount of money as the guy across the street, but what does it literally mean in this context?
Fair question, yeah. So basically, if I had to summarize it into a sentence or two, it's that if you are a wealthier-than-average jurisdiction, you have more of a responsibility to plan for more affordable units. If you are a less wealthy jurisdiction, then you have less of a responsibility. That is the way that the state...
So it's the Spider-Man rule?
Yeah, it's, yes. So the idea is to have everyone trending towards a similar number of lower-income households to kind of avoid concentrated poverty and issues like that that are state priorities.
Intellectually troubling, but okay.
Yeah, and I would just add, you know, I think, Mayor, you're spot on. It's going to be different this year, and we don't know exactly, you know, what that means, but there's a lot of talk and a lot of collaboration happening, people trying to figure out what those solutions are, and even in advance of getting whatever the number is, because everyone's assuming that that target number's going to be higher, right? So coming up with creative solutions, and it may not be, in the past, it may have looked more like a one-size-fits-all. You get 30 units to the acre, and you zone enough land multifamily, and you have, you know, an affordable housing trust fund, and you're done. And I think it's going to be a little bit different in terms of a range of solutions and types of programs and things like that. So, you know, it'll be, you know, an iterative process with all of you as we move through that, and we're going to engage a consultant to help us evaluate the numbers when they're presented to us, and we'll, I'm sure, be back in front of you to talk about that. And then we'll start our housing element update process and, you know, evaluate what those range of options are with you.
You know, my other concern is that right now, there's been a lot of threats coming from the governor's office, that you either meet your need, or they're going to start withholding transportation funding, at least that's where they're starting. And that, I'm finding a little bit frightening, having lived through this before and knowing how ugly, ugly, ugly the process was.
Sure, and like the vast majority of communities in California, as you know from your last annual housing element report, we did not meet our target. We will not meet our target by the close of this cycle period, just like 99% of the communities in California. So that is a big deal to have that kind of, you know, consideration.
Well, and for purposes of people that might be sitting here tonight or watching this meeting at some point online or on Channel 14, the way the rules worked is we had to have sufficient properties zoned that would facilitate the number that we were assigned in the RENA numbers last time. But because the city is not a builder of housing, if builders of whichever category don't come forward and want to build the projects, historically, they can't hold the city accountable. And that has frankly been my fear since the last go-around, is given what the governor's office is threatening, that if you don't meet your needs, we're going to withhold your transportation money. What does that mean? We don't have control over what happens on the private sector. So it's a scary thought to me.
Yeah, if I may add, I think that's a super-important distinction to make, that the RENA process as it stands, as it was constituted when it originally was created, is a zone-to-accommodate process. It's a planning process. It's not a construction mandate, recognizing your point, that cities are, in the vast majority of cases, not building housing. So there's been quite a bit of pushback on the governor's proposal. SAICOG is engaged in those discussions as well.
I mean, we have enough arguments in the region about the existing transportation funding, about who's going to get what, and, you know, hopefully, we'll find, you know, suitable ways to work that out, but having the governor's office threatening to pull a whole bunch of other funding is really problematic.
You know, I could make a comment. Mr. Holden's got me in my negative mood, so I can keep talking, you know. Until we get...
Big Bad Bob.
Yeah, until we get realistic and forget the nomenclature and all the theories and all this, that, and the other, all the bells look good, you know, very nice in theory, but how the hell do we get a young folks' family into a home that they can afford? Let me quote you an example I just heard the other day. An 550-square-foot house in Old Town, one bedroom, that, no extraordinary yard, no extraordinary granny flat, nothing, for $390,000, and they expect that to go up once the bidding starts. Now, how in the hell does a city, and a city council like us that want to get people into homes, how do we do that? You're going to have to help us, because, you know, the governor can say all the hell he wants to say, but as the mayor just said, we don't build the houses, okay? For the first time, I think, in the history of Folsom, we got two last year, a year before, low-income housing in their apartments. And we've been trying, okay, because we understand that we have an obligation to build affordable housing. Affordable housing is so neat to say at other locations, but when you meet the rubber, meets the road, and that's getting the families into the housing, the young people, I mean, they don't have to be married, they just have to be starting out. We can't do it. And you can, the mayor, the governor can say anything he wants as to what we can do, that's all talk. And if he, I feel that most of the cities, when they're trying, they can't get there. If he takes away any kind of other monies just in retribution, then he can go to court with us, okay? And we all should go take him to court and see who wins that argument.
I think you should run for Governor Ernie.
Yeah, right.
We don't, does anybody else have any questions for Dove?
I was just wondering, so is there any forecasted expectation from SAICOG of where it's going to be at compared to last time? I think it'd be frankly irresponsible for me to give you a range at this point. We just don't know. We're in early conversations with them, and obviously, we want to make sure that when we get it, we're going to vet it, make sure that it makes sense based on their formulas, there are no mistakes. But yeah, I'm sorry, I can't give you more than that.
If I had to speculate, it's probably going to be twice what it was last time.
Yeah, I guess the one thing I could say is that there's only been one region that has received a determination based on the new rules. That's Slocog and San Luis Obispo, and it was close to double. We're obviously a much larger region than that, so we'll see if the rules are similar here, but that's the one...
Plus, Slocog, once you get out of downtown Slocog, there's a lot of vacant land.
I agree, I grew up there, actually.
Yeah, no, I've worked on pipelines down there. I've been in some weird places where you can't see anything. Nothing is close by. We don't normally do this, but we do have one request to speak, and that's from Greg Stausser, sorry if I mispronounced that.
So, sir, it's good, you did really well. I answered a lot of different questions.
Okay.
But, so, I'm with Ernie Sheldon in regards to a lawsuit, because what's mind-boggling to me about this city, I moved here in 2003 to a beautiful city that was well-organized, and somehow, now I guess I understand it, why I'm driving around and I'm driving down Iron Point Road, and I'm going near Safeway, and I'm seeing this massive, massive apartment complex. And I'm wondering, where did that come from? That doesn't match the integrity of the city. Or I go down a bike trail, and I look off into the distance, and I see through the grass that there's something, another building back in the back, that they built on kind of marshland that was probably never supposed to be built. And then I drive down East Midwell, and I look up on the hill next to, on Oak Avenue Parkway, I think it is, or somewhere around there, this huge mammoth, I don't know what it is, but it's like four stories high, just all these buildings going up, and the one over by Sutter High School, the old, the old high school, the...
Sutter Middle.
Sutter Middle now. I mean, right across the street from Sutter Middle, you have these just jammed together. I mean, this city, I mean, you have the governor of California, or wherever this all came from, and I was kind of privy to it a little bit, but not really involved, and I guess it just shows what happens when you don't get involved, where somebody just says, oh, this city's been planned for all these years, and, but we're going to find a place to build this. We're just going to pick a piece of land here...
Actually, that's not quite how it works, but...
...to build it. And I just think that if we are really okay with what we're building in the city now, then we've lost our way, because when I moved here, it was a lot different than it is now. And I think that's kind of where I'll leave it. The other things that are going on in the city where the money is being spent, our roads are really bad. I mean, this is all kind of running together, but at the same time, where slurry ceiling, that's old technology. Not to get offside, but this is like, you know, what's going on in the city is just, it's different. It's different than when we moved here, and what's going up and being built is completely different than what's, what the integrity of the city was. So that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. And I guess we'll be hearing from you and Pam again in the near future.
Yep, we'll be back to you in the fall.
Okay. All right, so with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do you have anybody that wants to pull anything? If not, a motion would be in order.
I will move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
We'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino...
Yes.
Gaylord...
Yes.
Kozlowski...
Yes.
Sheldon...
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And we'll move on to old business, appointment of members to the Historic District Parking Solutions Ad-Hoc Committee. And as a manner of introduction to this item, we, the council, will be doing this based on the ballots that we have received, and I'm hoping that we have some extras here.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
What I want to say is I want to pay my respects to the mayor for getting where we're at right now, tonight. It took 10 and a half years on this council to get this far, and I appreciate her efforts to do it. We can all agree, but we got the motion going in the right direction, and I think tonight is going to even make it better. So I just want to pay, carry the respect that she deserves for pushing this to get it where we are tonight.
Why, thank you, Ernie. No applause necessary. So what we're going to do is, we have received, I think it's a total of 26 or so applications. There's a number of different categories for membership, and there's a couple of things that I just want to point out that we were not aware of at the time, that the decisions were made about what those categories were going to be. The first one relates to Folsom Historic District Association members, that's the business owners group. We were all under the assumption that you had to actually join the merchants' association. Well, apparently, that is not true. If you own a business and it's located within the historic district, you are automatically a member of that organization. And there's not really any segregation between the board and the membership, which is all of the businesses in the historic district. So I think that's important. The other thing that I think is important is the Historic Folsom Residents Association, which is a relatively newly, I'll just call it reconstituted, because this organization existed, I think, under a different name, and it kind of went dormant, and it's kind of resurfaced again, but that's only been in the relatively recent past, so I'm not sure that their membership, it's kind of like the opposite of what's going on in the merchants' association. There are people that are members that didn't know they were, and I suspect there are people that would like to be members of the residents' association that don't know how to go about doing that. So those are, I think, two important items to make people aware of. And when we do these votes tonight, so that we don't get into an argument, however the ballots go, because the council members are basically going to be picking the requisite number of people, and Lydia, are you going to put the ballots up on the screen? Okay, so you'll all be able to see who the individual people are that fit into a given category. Council members will be voting, but in order for, so we may have to do this a couple of times, depending upon how these votes split out, because there's a number of people in every category. But for anybody to actually get directly appointed, they're going to have to get at least three votes from the council. So is everybody aware of that?
In a particular category?
Yes, in a particular category. Like, the example I'll use is the first one, that's Historic District Association, so merchants' association, I'll probably call it that every time we've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people are qualified to represent that position. So we're voting for three, so we may or may not get three people in the first go-around, which means we'll have to do it again. Okay? So that's going to happen for every category, some of them, there's only one, and others, there are, let me see that, merchants' association, there's three, residents' association, there's three, historic district business owner not affiliated with FHDA, which actually, that doesn't exist, so it'll be somebody that's not involved in the residents' association, historic district resident not affiliated with either. It looks like it's typed the same as... Can we look at C and D, because they look the same to me? Folsom resident who lives outside the district, and Folsom business owner whose business is outside the historic district, and then professional planner or licensed engineer who's a Folsom resident and has professional expertise working on transportation-related projects. Those are our categories, but C and D on the ballots look the same to me.
No, one is a resident, one's a business owner.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so our first category, Lydia, you want to read those, or want me to do it?
No.
Will it pass me down to you?
Each council member will complete their ballot and pass it down to me.
No, I'm just wondering if you want to read those into the record.
Read what?
The names. The names.
We can, if you'd like.
Okay, well, does anybody want to hear them? I don't know if it helps for anybody who's listening to the meeting and not watching it.
The names under category A are Jerry Berno, Connie Chan, Glenn Fate, Karen Holmes, Kyle Middleton, Jim Snook, Brian Theane, and Murray Weaver.
Now, you want us to hand them in to you?
Yes.
We're gonna hand them over to...
Councilmembers will now mark their ballot for category A only, and pass that in to me, please. Okay, so councilmember Sheldon votes for Connie Chan, Karen Holmes, and Jim Snook. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Jerry Berno, Karen Holmes, and Jim Snook. Mayor Howell votes for Karen Holmes, Kyle Middleton, and Murray Weaver. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Karen Holmes, Jim Snook, and Murray Weaver. And councilmember Gaylord votes for Karen Holmes, Jim Snook, and Murray Weaver.
So that tells me we have our three. That would be Karen Holmes, Jim Snook, and Murray Weaver. All three have at least three. So when we put the next one up, Lydia, can we just double-check and see if there's any names that need to be removed? I don't think so. I think we're good. Okay. So this next one is people that are associated with the FHRA membership.
The applicants under the HFRA category B, as in boy, are Mike Brenquist, Shannon Brenquist, Glenn Fate, Ben Fuentes, Deborah Grassel, Paul Keast, Cindy Ferris, Michael Reynolds, and Scott Spiegelman. Okay. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Shannon Brenquist, Paul Keast, and Cindy Ferris. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Shannon Brenquist, Glenn Fate, and Scott Spiegelman. Mayor Howell votes for Mike Brenquist, Paul Keast, and Scott Spiegelman.
Mike and Shannon, you're splitting your votes there.
Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Shannon Brenquist, Glenn Fate, and Cindy Ferris. And councilmember Gaylord votes for Shannon Brenquist, Paul Keast, and Cindy Ferris.
Sorry, Mike. Shannon's wearing the pants today. So that means we've got Shannon Brenquist, Paul Keast, and Cindy Ferris. And our next one is historic district business owner, theoretically not affiliated with FHDA, but we know that not to be true, or the residents association. Yeah, we do need to remove Murray Weaver.
So remaining eligible applicants in category C are Joe Galliardi, Charles Newth...
I'm not sure how Joe's eligible in this category. Oh, the chamber's located in the district.
But maybe there are a number of those things.
Yeah, it's a business owner not affiliated with FHDA or HF.
My understanding is that if you're in the district, you're in FHDA. That was my point at the beginning of this whole thing.
So you don't believe he's eligible to be in this category?
They would all be businesses in the district, so they would all be ineligible under that.
Is he a business owner? He's not a business owner, is he?
He also applied under categories D and G, so if you wanted to consider him, he's also eligible under two other categories.
Okay.
But just curious, if he wouldn't be eligible, then the others would not be eligible, because they'd be business owners in the district still. It's the same as you.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
So, do we just redo this one?
You can, go ahead. We haven't turned him in yet, so nobody's voted, so if you want to change whatever you did, please feel free to do so.
Oh, no, I'm good. I'll vote.
Okay.
So we're good with voting for these folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So you might have noticed in this category, we're only appointing one member, so each council member is only voting for one. So Mayor Howell votes for Scott Spiegelman. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Charles Newth. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Charles Newth. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Charles Newth. And councilmember Gaylord votes for Charles Newth. So in this one, Lydia, if you'll line through Charles Newth, he's no longer eligible. So in category D, councilmember Kozlowski votes for Michael Burkhart. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Phil Rotherham. Mayor Howell votes for Enid Baldock. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Phil Rotherham. And councilmember Sheldon votes for Enid Baldock.
So I think we need to send those back.
So here we have a tie. So do you want to vote between Enid and Phil?
We could do that. Do you want to send him back out, or do you want to just do a voice vote on it?
You can do a voice vote if you want.
Oh, send him back out, it's more dramatic. It probably is worth commenting that, at least for myself, I don't know a lot of the people that applied for this, but all of them had passionate, good reasons for wanting to be on the committee, and I don't think, whatever the result is, we're gonna end up with, you know, anything but a terrific group of people, so...
Recount and checking for hanging chads.
So councilmember Kozlowski votes for Phil Rotherham. Mayor Howell votes for Enid Baldock. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Enid Baldock. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Phil Rotherham. And councilmember Gaylord votes for Phil Rotherham. So Phil is appointed.
Next one is Folsom resident who lives outside the historic district.
Okay, somebody come off that list? Okay, in category E, we have councilmember Sheldon votes for Loretta Hedinger. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Kyle Middleton. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Brian Theane. Sonnet? I can't believe I missed that. Mayor Howell votes for Gary Richard. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Brian Sonnet. That's Brian Theane, pronounced Sonnet. So Mr. Sonnet is appointed.
You don't have to have three?
No, he's not. He has to have three.
Excuse me?
And that Theane guy got at least one vote.
I know, he's tripping me up. All right. So we'll send these ballots back out again. If you'd clearly cross out your ballot if you're revoting. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Loretta Hedinger. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Kyle Middleton. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Brian Sonnet. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Brian Sonnet. We have a tie again?
We could do this for a long time.
Can we lobby a little bit here?
Certainly.
You certainly may.
So there's, what, 11 people total, I think, gonna be on this committee? I think so far, the only person we have under the age of 50, I'm guessing, maybe 55, I don't know how old Shannon is, is Charlie Newth, who I understand is about 30.
Not that this is about age discrimination.
No, it's not, it's not, but I think we want to have a good mix in there, and...
Actually, I think you're right. I'll change my vote to Kyle.
Same.
God, that was easy. Quite persuasive, wow.
We're gonna win, no matter who's on this, it's gonna be...
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I just, I think there should be, you know, a mix of folks.
Here, here.
I voted for Kyle Middleton, and I have no idea how old he is, just so you know.
So it appears that the council is in agreement that Kyle Middleton is appointed.
That's fine.
Okay, and the next one is Folsom business owner whose business is outside the historic district.
Okay, in category F, councilmember Sheldon votes for Matt Keister. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Steve Herd. Mayor Howell votes for Steve Herd. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Steve Herd. And councilmember Gaylord also votes for Steve Herd.
God, that was almost too easy.
I know.
Okay, and our last category, professional planner or licensed engineer who's a Folsom resident and has professional expertise working on transportation-related projects.
Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Joe Galliardi. Mayor Howell votes for Joe Galliardi. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Kenton Ashworth. And councilmember Gaylord votes for Kenton Ashworth. So it would appear that Kenton Ashworth is appointed.
And I want to thank everybody that applied. This was a very big list of people, and I hope that the committee works well together. As soon as we know when these meetings are gonna take place, to those of you who did not get appointed, I strongly encourage you to attend these meetings. They will be public meetings, and I, for one, particularly for the people that I supported to get on this committee that didn't, I would personally appreciate it if you would attend these meetings.
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you as well, and I emailed most of these folks, the applicants on here, and the responses I got back were fantastic, so the more participation, the better, because everyone had really great ideas, and it was incredibly hard, as Mike had stated, incredibly hard to pick who to actual appoint, but I appreciate everyone for putting the time in to want to do this, so thank you.
Gary, can I ask you one thing?
Yes, you may.
On the instructions to the committee, I think I would like to be sure that they can meet in a quiet, private place, and not a restaurant or a bar or anything else, because...
The ad hoc committee?
Yeah, that committee would be disappointed.
They will not be meeting in a bar. They will be meeting, they will be meeting at a city facility.
We will find a nice professional conference room.
I'm disqualifying it, okay?
No, the meetings will be facilitated likely inside this building, and they will staff by our staff.
Excellent, thank you.
In fact, they are encouraged not to have discussions in bars about this subject.
That would be nice, yeah. And we are in the final stages of recruiting a professional facilitator to help guide this group, and as the mayor mentioned, several of our senior staff members and department heads will be present at these meetings to provide expert guidance when needed. So we'll share information as the first meeting comes about, and it is open to the public.
And they are subject to the Brown Act, correct?
Absolutely.
So therefore, there will be no partial meetings in bars, so...
They can still go on their own, but...
They can do whatever they like, so, thanks for that comment, Ernie.
Well, you never know.
And with that, we will move on to public hearing. You want to read it?
Public hearing item 9A is resolution number 10280, a resolution adopting the city manager's fiscal year 2019-20, operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the successor agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority. This will be a public hearing following the assistant city manager's presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, Assistant City Manager, and I'm just gonna be brief with my comments, there's been no changes to the proposed budget that you reviewed on April 23rd, so it's exactly as presented. We do have one item that we were asked to bring back with some information, and that was regarding the playground shade structures. was regarding the playground shade structures.
Sorry, shaded. Jim, just do whatever Krista says.
Absolutely.
Life is a lot easier that way.
So on the shade structures, again, just some basic information. There's 51 existing playgrounds in our parks, 31 separate swing apparatus. Currently, there's only one playground that has the shade structure. The other playgrounds have natural structure, being trees and that sort of thing around them, but only one that has an actual structure tied to it. There are issues of the time of day, and who's being served, the coverage area, and so on, that go into putting up these structures. There are three basic types. The fabric roof, which runs about $89,000, that's the top picture. The metal roof, which is about $138,000. And then the shade sails, which are about $100,000, and that would be your bottom picture. We did have an add-on bid for the fabric shade sails at Economy Park. That bid came in at $100,000. Again, if you did the entire existing playgrounds, you'd have a cost of about $4.5 to $7 million. Obviously, there's a lot of alternatives between doing it all and doing, you know, just a few, and putting them in. In addition, in terms of future park development, that can be added as an add-alternate to any of those future bids. So at that, we would leave... That's all I have in terms of presentation, and then you can go to your public hearing, and I'll be glad to take questions after that.
Did we look at, on those, thank you, by the way, on those options, if we look at some of the buildings, some of the schools redone by, with FCUSD, like Oak Chan, you look at the play structure, there's actually attached canopies on the play structures themselves that come out, and they're plastic. And they have a pretty significant amount of shade that comes down from it from the top. Did we look at that option on expenditures as well, or no?
I believe we did, and our Parks and Rec Director, Lorraine Pajoni, can correct me if I'm off base, but my understanding is to retroactively add shade, like you see, for instance, at Oak Chan Elementary School, would be about $6,000 each. And we did get the comment that some of the structures, they felt it would be better to just tear down the existing structure and rebuild, because it would get costly to add the amount of shade that you were hoping to achieve. And then in some cases, it might end up being more aesthetic than actually providing true shade.
Did you say 6,000?
6,000, yeah.
Because that's, I guess that's one of my big issues, is there's a big distinction from 6 to 138. And looking at, you know, watching the play structure, watching the shade from, like Oak Chan as an example, not that it would be the same, but what's there would be sufficient for, in my mind and most families' minds, for their kids to play on. I feel like there's a better option than these, which are extremely expensive. And then also, there's the element of which parks would you actually look at doing these, because not all of them require, because like you said, some have natural shades, some don't. So I think there's a, I'd like to see more of a discussion on actual pricings that, you know, fit each park, and which parks we'd look at, so that we can incorporate some of those over time to do it.
And I would respectfully suggest that I think that that is a decision that, you know, unless you want to have that discussion tonight, I think that's something that really needs to go back to the Parks Commission.
I'm more than ready for it to go to the Parks Commission. My problem with it is that this would be the third year that we've said we're going to take it to the Parks Commission, where it passes a budget cycle. And by the time this actually goes to the Parks Commission, I'm worried that it's not going to, you know what I mean? Like, it's just, I feel like if it's gonna go, if that's the route we're gonna go, we should put it in the Parks Commission and let it go through, and actually get an allocation for it, and something we can incorporate into the budget, you know?
Yeah, we can definitely, you know, send it down to the Parks and Rec Commission for, you know, a meeting very soon. Ultimately, of course, a decision will have to be made in terms of what you want to trade by way of, you know, capital improvement projects within parks for shade, if that's the decision.
What would be the instruction to the Parks Commission? I mean, ultimately, they're making recommendations to us.
Well, I think it would be that we have at least one council member that has expressed interest in shade structures. Can you, Parks Commissioners, please look at your existing capital and maintenance budget, and let us know if A, you're interested in doing this, and B, how you would suggest we go about paying for it? Because at the end of the day, you have to look at the long-term Parks and Rec capital improvement budget, their maintenance budget, all of which is significantly short of what's in the master plan. So something's gotta go. And I think we, I would want to hear from the Parks Commission what they want to eliminate.
The larger issue of the wish list that's been provided by the Parks Commission is overreach based on available funding in general, so...
Right, I would suggest that, you know, I don't think it would be a bad idea for the Parks Commission to take another look at the master plan, and, you know, and what the anticipated revenue stream is gonna be. And, you know, frankly, I'd like to see them do that on an annual basis, when we know how much money's coming in, and how far that money's gonna go. I don't know the last time the Parks Commission reprioritized where they were spending their money. So that would be my recommendation.
Again, not to mince words here, but the language you're using makes it seem like these ideas have to originate with the Parks Commission?
I don't think they need to, but I think it would behoove us, as the council members, to get input on these from the Parks Commission, unless Councilmember Gaylord wants to make a motion to take X amount of dollars... And put it into this budget cycle, and then I want Councilmember Gaylord to tell us what he wants to take out of the budget to pay for it.
So that's the problem we have, is outside of the variance of $6,000 to $138,000, I wouldn't even know where to start unless I go hire a consultant myself. And what I'm asking for staff, and maybe I'm giving direction, is to, for us to look at our inventory in our parks, and understand how much it would cost to provide shade for the ones that need it. And from there, fine-tune those dollars on what it would actually cost to do it, and then that, bring that, even if you wanted to bring that to the Parks Commission, I'm totally fine with that. From my understanding and talking to consultants, number one, the shade not only is beneficial for health with kids and whatnot when they're playing from sun exposure, but it also prolongs the life of the play structures, because it minimizes the amount of sun damaging the play structures. So there's some, like, gives and takes from it, but I just don't know where to start with that. And that's what I keep tossing out there, but it keeps coming back, and then we don't do it. So I don't know, maybe you can give some clarity, or some...
The only thing I say is, my 20 years in the Park Commission, if we could have figured out how to put shade over some of the structures, we would have done that. And with that moving sun, you never get the right time, okay? And sometimes I think parents have to decide that if it's 100, 105, the child doesn't go on the playground, okay? Or you put a pop-up at 10, or take a number, or something that protects them, I don't want them to get hurt. But it's just something that, I think in October of last year, the Park Commission did make a determination on shade structures. I think in one of their meetings, I have to ask...
And Ernie, I think you're right, and I think that the Parks and Rec Commission also weighed in on that add-alternate at Economy Park, and chose not to do it, because we were otherwise planting 400 trees in the park.
So what about bringing up some sort of budget to do a test pilot on the park, to see if we can do that? So allocating a certain amount of money, and fitting something within that amount? I mean...
Yeah, it would just be helpful, honestly, as a starting point, to know what dollar amount we're trying to target, because it helps us understand the priority here. So, for example, if you're wanting to spend about $50,000, I mean, you see the range of options here, I know that's a wide range, but there's also, our parks look, a lot of them look very different, and there's no easy cookie-cutter solution. I wish I could just say to you, Councilmember Gaylord, you can add shade in every park for $6,000 each, but that is not an accurate statement at all. So it would be helpful if I could get consensus from the council, if there is consensus from the council, to arrive at a dollar amount, that we could then work with staff, and perhaps ultimately the commission, to say, what does, you know, $50,000 worth of shade look like, and what do you want to trade for that? That's where we need to get to. Because it isn't something that has been contemplated dollar-wise, and you can see that you can get into the millions of dollars here. So I need to know that there's some consensus, and I need to understand what dollar magnitude we're trying to get to.
And I think it also goes back to what you said early on, you know, Lorraine, I don't know if you want to chime in here, but you said that there are some of the existing playground structures that could be shaded for $6,000. Well, is that two of them, and the rest of them are, you know, can't be retrofitted, so that the playground equipment would have to be completely replaced? I know that playground equipment at Mitchell Park is, I don't know, at least 15 years old, if not older than that. So my guess is, retrofitting on that one's probably not an option. You know, maybe some of the newer ones are, but again, the newest one is Economy Park, and the Parks Commission chose not to spend $100 on that particular facility, so...
We, as staff, are very content to, you know, go out and place shade in parks, but we need to understand how much, if anything, you as the council want to spend on that, and what is not gonna happen, or what is gonna be pushed back as a result. That's where we are.
What if we took a peek at, like, $60,000, and see what we can manage to, you know, like, to Mayor Howell's point, if we can find two parks set for $6,000 each, we're able to provide shade, then start doing stuff like that with that small amount of money, to see where we get? If we come to the realization that it's just, you know, we can't do it, but we can, you know, push forward with newer parks as they come online to include that incorporated going forward, and that's, I'm willing to give and take with that, but I want to at least start somewhere.
Yeah, as your city manager, I'm happy to implement that if I get direction. So I think I heard 60,000, if there, if, you know, if you're looking at the capital improvement program for parks, and you can tell me what we're going to take 60,000 out of, that's very helpful. As far as future parks, yes, Councilmember Gaylord, we will provide in our specs and add-alternate for shade going forward. And then, of course, that's always at the commission's discretion as to whether, you know, that happens, as happened with Economy Park.
You know, I'd like to make a comment, and that my 20 years as a Park Commissioner, if this council made a decision like we're talking about now, without, in bringing them into it, I'd be incensed, no end, because I would thought that I'm out there to do the job for this council.
I came to the council with a idea to pitch the idea of something, just like maybe a few meetings ago, and that was for voted mayor, and I didn't have anything tangible. So my goal isn't to give the commission something not tangible, I want to give them some sort of, something not vague, you know what I mean? So if we picked a budget amount, and we start there and give them something to work with, I think they might be able to digest that versus saying, we just need shade, how do we do it?
I think what Ernie's suggesting is, you want us to come up with a number, you want us to send the number back to the Parks Commission, and you want to tell the Parks Commission, you're gonna spend $60,000 on shade, tell us where you're gonna cut that out of the budget. And that's what Ernie's upset about. And I don't like that either. If you have a suggestion for where you want to find $60,000, propose that to the council, and we can build on it with this budget.
That's the whole deal here, is to understand, I mean, it's kind of hard to always say, you need to go do this, you need to go do that. I'm asking where we can do it, and the professionals within parks, and I'm totally fine with going to the commission. I'm not saying you have to find $60,000 to cut out of your budget, I'm saying, let's work with it, and I'll look through as well, and as decision-makers, we understand, hey, this is something I want to look at, this is something the committee...
And we can have them look at it moving forward, but what's in front of us tonight is this budget. So if you're proposing to change... I'm asking you, Roger, if you want to change this budget, what do you want to change?
I need more time to go through that, so...
Roger, can I offer maybe a longer-term solution? I'm certainly not opposed to putting shade structures over parks, and other jurisdictions do it, right? So obviously, there's a way to do it. And maybe our Parks Commission needs to take a field trip to look at some other cities. I'm assuming that it's more expensive to go back and do this retroactively than if it was planned for at the beginning, right? And I would, I'm very skeptical that we could go back and put shade anywhere for $6,000. So, and I know this won't solve the immediate problem, but what if we just say, going forward, when we're looking at south of 50, I mean, I don't think every shade, every park needs to have shade, but maybe one out of three, one out of four, something like that.
There were two things to your point that I recommended we do at every park going forward. One is integrated CCTV, the other is shade structure. So going forward, that's, I absolutely agree. I would like to look at some of our existing inventory on parks north of 50, and see if we can provide shade for it. So, I mean, I'm, to your point, I'm sure it's probably not going to be $6,000, it's probably gonna be closer to, you know, if we did that build-on structure, like 10, 20, something like that. So if we're able to start doing that going forward, I just don't want to go through another year of budget where they're like, oh, well, here's the budget you have now, so let's talk about what you want to do later, but, because we're the council, not, the Parks Commission is a Parks Commission, which recommends, and, you know, we, this is something I want to put through, because I know that parents want it, and feel like that it should be there, right?
Jim, what happened to that $30,000 for disc golf at Nissenon? That's not gonna happen? Is that somewhere?
It remains in the fund.
Could that be reallocated to possible use for a shade structure?
Are you talking about the Nissenon?
Yeah.
I think we decided we were, Lorraine, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that money is to go to enhance the existing BT Collins Disc Golf Course, because there were users that came to council that we're talking about, it needed some upkeep.
Lorraine, can you answer the question as to whether or not the Parks Commission has any time in the last six or eight months to discuss the issue of shade structures, or shade period?
Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the council, Lorraine Pajoni. We have discussed it, and it's been discussed at the subcommittee level in the Parks Commission, and that was...
Was that capital or rehab?
Renovation, the renovation committee, yeah. And yeah, so we did discuss it, and what we did outline in that subcommittee meeting was the various types of shade structures that we are aware of right now, that Mr. Francis went through. But also, that $6,000, and I apologize if I didn't make it clear to the city manager, but the $6,000 is generally what the add-on would be if you go to buy a new structure. So you're buying a structure, and you want to add on, like, the little wings, or the little, you know, small amount of shade cover over the top of the slide, or the top of where the landing is, you know, the top part where the kid would go down. So...
So that's an add-on when you purchase it? So what is the ballpark, what is the cost to go in and add? Is there a less expensive option for adding shade that's not shown on the PowerPoint?
I would have to look into that, in terms of retrofit. And the information that was provided to me by our park planners, all the play structures are all different, they're all different ages, they're all different types, some are metal, some are plastic, and so I don't know if there's a kind of off-the-shelf sort of add-on for, you know, one type of structure versus another. So we could certainly research that.
I frankly would be surprised if those things don't change annually.
Well, they do. I mean, and that's one of the things that we're tasked with, too, is...
Yeah, I was frankly surprised to hear that you could retrofit them.
Yeah, and we're not 100% sure that you can retrofit them, but that $6,000 was a typical add for, like, one, and I believe it was just either one or two sort of shade...
I think it was just one, and the comment was, it might take several, and that might impede play, and it would take a lot to be more than just decorative, so...
So, I mean, the add-ons, like Economy add-on is 100 grand right there, so I mean, that's, there's obviously different options that, like you're saying, and I'm totally, I'm more than happy with staff investigating and looking what options there are. That's just, I feel like I kind of keep asking that same, that ask.
And I appreciate that, and I realize that you had asked this, and what I'm aware of, at least a year ago, this, with the new elections, the new appointments, the subcommittees finally getting together, it really did take, you know, kind of that cycle to, for it to land in the renovation committee, so... But it has indeed arrived there, and they have discussed it, and, you know, we did put that in the context of the larger challenges we have in parks right now, with unfinished parks, new parks that haven't been built yet, a funding stream that we're certain is not as robust as it had been in the past. And so that is a large challenge for the Parks and Rec Committee, that we are now working with in the renovation and the master plan committee, subcommittee, is how do we put our arms around, and then prioritize what little money is coming in to start parks, finish parks? And we are gonna be, that's the next round of discussions over the next several months in our Parks and Rec Commission.
So to that end, we clearly don't have enough funding to do everything that we would like to do, and it doesn't, and we don't have the prospect of enough funding to do everything that we would like to do. So I think, I think one thing, which is probably gonna make at least a couple of people less happy than they were before I say this, I think the idea of adding to our collection of parks by... I think the idea of adding to our collection of parks by building a new park is short-sighted right at the moment. And if we have a new park planned, we need to put a pin in that probably and look at what maintenance and upgrade and enhancement projects we have that we can get done in the interim so that we make the best use of the parks that we already own. We have a magnificent collection of parks and trails and outdoor spaces here in Folsom, and adding, you know, 2% of park space to that collection seems like digging the hole deeper rather than making good use of our funding. So I think, to the extent that we can, I think we need to change the timing of the new park that's planned, and that may ultimately give the Park Commission an opportunity to revisit the master plan for how to spend that money and potentially open up some funding for Councilman Gaylord's idea.
I'd like to go back to my first comment, and that is, I think that it would be a good idea for the Parks Commission annually to take a look at what's on the master plan. But with regard to, I guess you're talking about Benevento Park, you can feel free to go tell the neighborhood that that's your plan. I won't be with you when you do that, but...
Like I said, it's going to make some people unhappy, but the realistic solution here is to not keep digging the hole deeper unless we have another funding source, and I don't see where that's coming from because the voters of Folsom decided that the tax measure was inappropriate.
That may need to be reconsidered sometime in the future. It's when you get hurting and you can't do everything, then you stand up and you get counted. Right now, we've been very blessed with the parks we got, the schools we got, police forces and safety we have. We have that, that's good. But you can get complacent, too, and sometime it's going to get away from us if we don't pay attention.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting never building it. I'm just suggesting that making it happen in the next 12 months may be a short sighted, given the entirety of our situation.
Oh, it's not going to happen in the next 12 months. We don't have the money now, so.
We're budgeting a significant amount of money for that park in the next 12 months.
I think it's 24 months, right? Or the parking lot is 12 months, right?
Oh, in terms of the, right now, the amount of budget that has been proposed is about half of what we would need to construct. It's about a little over...
2.5 million?
Yeah, and that's like 4.5 million to build the park.
Right, so we won't even complete it with the funding that we've proposed.
But remember, in the east area, there were five parks scheduled on the master plan. We've only finished two. So when you say we don't need it, maybe the east area won't agree with you.
Let me clarify my statement one more time. I'm not suggesting that we never build it. I'm not suggesting that we don't need it. What I'm suggesting that is it is not the best economic choice to make when we do not have enough funding to do all the other things that we would like to do.
And again, I'm only suggesting that I'd like to get some weigh-in on the part of the Parks Commission.
No question. I'm suggesting giving the Parks Commission an opportunity to revisit the master plan.
Yep.
Potentially reallocate some of that funding.
Right.
And reevaluate the timing.
Right, and I've always been a fan of that because frankly, I think we've probably got $40 million worth of stuff on the Parks Master Plan that we're never going to be able to pay for. So I'm a big fan of having them relook at the master plan annually. We do it for a lot of the things that we do, whether it's public works or whatever. We have to look at the priority list and what projects are going to stay in the capital expenditure program, and I'd like to see the Parks Commission do that a little bit more frequently.
And Mayor Howell, they do. That is a yearly, that is a yearly evaluation in the Parks and Rec Commission. So both the renovation committee, so will bring forward all the renovations that need to be done in the existing parks. That is reviewed with the Parks and Rec Commission and also the master plan. So they do help us prioritize. So we give them the big list of what needs to be done, and then the projected revenue that we've, we know is, or we have been told is coming in, and then that they do prioritize for, so.
But if we adopt this budget as-is, which includes 2.6 million for Benevento Park, that essentially is giving you a green light to go ahead and start planning and hiring architects, designers, whatever. I mean, some of that money is going to get spent, right? All of that money is going to get spent.
Correct. And one of the, one of the ideas that we're working with Vice Mayor Aquino is to, there's probably enough money, a little bit, I think 400,000 was set aside the year prior, and then the 2.5 or 6 now. That would be enough to do the design, engineering, and construction of the upper tier of Benevento, which would be a parking lot, parking, or a bathroom, play structure, and then the field at the lower end, and then not do anything in the, in the second tier on the upper, on the upper portion of the park. So we feel like we can get like 2/3 of, you know, or about half of the park in, make the field programmable so that it, again, kind of satisfies a lot of the youth athletic leagues and whatnot that would use that field. So we feel like we can make it, take a decent, that amount of money and make a decent usable park.
So it's a usable park, not only in terms of the field being programmable, but then obviously that parking lot is in hot demand by the neighboring high school, and so it helps to solve that problem as well, and it just gets us started in a positive fashion.
So let me ask another question and add another wrinkle here. Have there been any discussions with the school district in terms of, do they have any plans whatsoever to expand Vista? Because if they need to do that or want to do that, that's the only logical place for them to do that.
Did you, I didn't hear that.
If the district decided they needed to expand Vista...
Make the school bigger, Ernie.
They have not, we have not had, they haven't approached us about, are you talking about like approaching us to perhaps purchase part of the land designated for Benevento? Those conversations haven't happened.
Okay, right. Before you go away, I hate to ask this question, and I'm not trying to cut Roger off, but I've been told there's a van for the senior center to go on their trips, the 19-year-old van they're using now to make trips. It's pretty dangerous. Now, I couldn't find it in the book. Maybe I'm just not looking in the right spot. Is it there?
Yeah, we did propose replacing that van to get our seniors...
I just can't find it, but it's there.
It's in there.
Okay, because 19 years, a senior's riding, nine passengers, dangerous as that.
Absolutely, we agree.
Okay.
Is it practical to approve the budget and with a specific instruction to delay the start of the Benevento expenditures and hold that funding until the Parks Commission can do a more thorough job of revisiting the master plan?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate to do that.
Well, you're making an assumption by that remark that they didn't do a thorough job. When they did, it's wrong.
I'm sorry, with new instructions to revisit the master plan?
I think that's a fair assumption, as long as that can happen in the short term, Ernie.
Yeah.
I'm never, I hesitate to let him go back and take a second look. That's...
Yeah, I think that's all Mike's suggesting.
I'm just, yeah, again, I'm just suggesting that we do not have enough funding to do everything that's in the master plan, and building another park that will have more expense for us to maintain may not be the best use of the funds that we have available right now. And I realize that that is going to make some people unhappy.
Not only that, but that was said 30 years ago, that we can't build them because we can't maintain them. We didn't listen to that attitude, and we did find a way to build them, and we do maintain them.
Ernie, except we've still got a whole bunch of parks on the master plan that we don't have the money to build, and I think that's the point that Mike is trying to get to. So I have, I will support a motion to move forward with the budget as-is with the codicil that we go back to the Parks and Rec Commission and have them know that, you know, we're kind of get that 2.5 million dollars, whatever the number is, in suspended animation until they come back to us, you know, after they've taken another look with a, you know, yet one more update of the financial future that we're looking at at the moment. And, you know, maybe this all changes if the state of California comes in and says, we have to build, you know, 50,000 units and, you know, a boatload of, you know, a Brink's truck backs up with a whole bunch of park fees. Hopefully, that all doesn't happen, but, you know, it could theoretically. So I have no problem with doing that.
I'm looking at the capital improvement plan, trying to look at it. I think we, I think this council, me in one particular, need to sit down and be educated a little bit more. I went through that and looking at what I'm looking at and when it's going to happen and when it's not going to happen. It's more complex than I thought it was. In the past, I thought I understood it. I'm not sure I do understand it now, and that's why I, tonight, I'm not in favor of voting on this plan. But I think, and I apologize for when we, I met with you yesterday, I didn't have this focus. But that's a complex, the CPA, and that's what you're talking about. We put it on there, and it stays on there for two or three years. We never spend the money. And the money is there, right, Jim? That's what you tell me. The money's there.
For which park?
For what we put on the...
The money's there to spend to build part of Benevento Park, not to finish it?
No, no, but I'm saying, we're not going to get to it anyway. We're not going to spend it. But if you're trying to find money to go for a shade project, now that's something different.
Well, but you can, you can include that whole discussion as conversation for the Parks Commission. It's like, okay, we want to spend...
That's what I was just going to ask, to clarify.
My concern about Benevento almost has nothing to do with the shade structure. It just happens to be a related part of the infrastructure issues.
I know, but there's a list of other stuff, too.
But there is a nexus potentially, yeah, and there's lots of other things.
We have been having a lot of discussions at the staff level of trying to make sure we're matching projected available dollars to these projects instead of just having kind of a timeline, you know, one after another of these parks, because it's really not a realistic look of what we can truly deliver, and I think it creates false expectations.
It absolutely creates false expectations.
Well, it's also, I think, appropriate to relook at the master plan for north of 50 in light of the fact that Measure E did not pass, right? So you either have to get another funding source or you have to revise the spending plan. So I think it's appropriate timing. And going back to the shade structure, again, you know, I'm willing to support that, not on every park, not even on every park south of 50, but, you know, I think it's appropriate, and I'd be happy to go on a little field trip and look and see how other communities are doing it.
So we can, we can, I'll work with Lorraine to, you know, facilitate a conversation with the commission about looking at, you know, to kind of, as you say, putting Benevento dollars kind of in suspended animation for a bit and talking about some alternatives, and then bringing this and relating the shade idea to that conversation as well.
Right, because I'd like to get some additional input from the Parks Commission, really frankly, on both of those items.
If you'd like a motion, I'll make one.
I think you...
Yeah, I would recommend that we adopt the budget as presented with the caveat that we place the funding for Benevento Park on the shelf until we get further input from the Parks Commission with regard to potentially doing shade structures or reorganizing how that money is spent.
And I will continue to second that.
Isn't this a public hearing? Don't we have to hear from the public?
Yeah, you haven't had the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open it, but we have no res...
You have to.
We've voted for the...
So I wanted to get into, also in this, I'm not sure I'm ready to pass the budget in general, because I had one more question on PD and staffing. So I was brought it up to Elaine, and I wanted to look at different staffing levels with officers in regards to traffic enforcement and also response time. And I know that's a significant increase if we were to look at that, but I didn't know if we, I don't think I was ready to actually pass this today, so I don't know.
I'm not ready to pass it today.
So Councilmember Gaylord, on your, on your comment about police officers, just for the record, I know you and I have had this conversation, but a fully benefited police officer ranges from about 165,000 annually to about 215,000 annually, so...
And that's to start?
That's, that's the range, and it is an annual cost, and so it needs an ongoing revenue source, not one-time dollars. So the conversation you and I had, and I, you know, encouraged the conversation to happen here at the dais, is so we need to understand as staff, you know, I've done the best job I can working with Jim to put forward a budget of, you know, the best cutting of the pie that we could propose. I need to understand if we're going to add officers or that's the proposal. I need to understand how we're reallocating that pie. I need to understand where that's coming from.
Yeah, that's why I felt like I need more time with the budget, because honestly, I feel like we have like a 30,000-foot overview. We don't have as defined, you know, line items as you have, and we can look through here, but we don't know, just saying, hey, it'd be nice to have more officers, you know, just saying that doesn't mean I can go in here and actually, you know, strike out things that we do or don't need. So I'd like to, at least, I actually, I agree with Councilmember Kozowski. I agree with that motion, and I'm fine with everything else on here. I just wanted to see if we could push it to one more meeting just to have a few different, a few more decisions.
Okay, well, then I'm going to ask, then I'm going to ask a question, because it sounds like you had this conversation privately with the city manager, and what needs to happen, the way this government works, is we need to have these conversations in public?
We didn't have a conversation. I said I wanted to talk about it on the dais. She said, okay, talk about it on the dais. So that's where we're at.
All right, so you need to tell us what it is that you want.
I want more time on the budget.
Well, so does that mean you're going to come back at the next meeting and say, I want four more cops?
No, I'd like to know the reality of what we can and can't achieve versus what it would take to, if we were to look at this from a staff and a holistic approach, if we were to say, hey, you know, if the realization is we need, we would, we would want three officers or four officers, and, hey, we can actually incorporate one by removing this, and then we bring that to the dais for the council to look at.
Okay, well, I would, I would like, I want to hear what it is that you want and what objective you're trying to achieve.
My objective is traffic enforcement in general. I want to have more officers on the streets to handle the crisis we have with red light running, with speeding, with just the unsafe conditions we have, especially on East Midwell. It's crazy. And then our response times are close to 13, 15, 16 minutes for PD to get to...
I'd actually appreciate if somebody from PD could come up and talk about response times.
Lieutenant Heischlinger, could I ask you to do that, please? Thank you.
Don't go away, Jim, you're not done yet.
Eric Heischlinger for Chief Hillman, who is out of state. So we have, we do our response times based on the time that that call comes in to the dispatch center, to the time that the officer arrives on scene. Most agencies are reasonably do it differently. They do it the time the officer is dispatched to the time that they arrive. The difference being that lag time when the call comes in, if that call is put in depending status because there are no officers available, then that, if you do it the latter way, you're not capturing that data. So if you look at our apples-to-apples, our response times are not exactly what you're seeing in your publication. So priority one times apples-to-apples, meaning the time that an officer is dispatched to the time that they arrive on scene is about 7 minutes and 12 seconds for priority one calls, as opposed to the 9:32, I think, which is the time the officer is actually, the call comes in and the officer arrives on scene.
So it's nowhere near 13 to 16 minutes or whatever you just said.
Well, then that contradicts exactly what the chief told me, because that's what I told him.
There's a wide, there's a wide variety, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, Lieutenant Heischlinger, but there's, there's a wide variety of response times depending on the type of call. So when you merge all those together and average them, you know, you get very different numbers. But priority one versus, you know, you tell me what would be a low priority call.
A non-injury accident.
Yeah, I mean...
A non-injury accident, you could have, you know, a commercial road early call, an alarm, which 99% of the time are false. That's going to be a lower priority than a domestic violence in progress. So really, we think it's a more honest way of looking at the data, because if you're looking at the time the officer is dispatched to the time they're on scene, the really only variable there is where that officer was when he was dispatched to the call to when they arrive. If you're looking at the total package, meaning the citizen calls us and says, I need help, we're capturing that data from the start of it. And I think that's really the expectation of our community, is they want to know, when they call 911, how long until that officer is on scene? And so when you look at, you know, most agencies in our region are going to throw out those numbers in terms of the response times, for the most part, you're looking at apples and oranges, because the way we do it, I think, is a more honest reflection of the citizens' expectations as to when we get there. So the wide variety is just that, what the city manager said, is that the different calls for service are going to, obviously going to dictate a different response time. We're not going to clear an officer from a report call because another report call just came in. We probably are going to clear an officer from a report call if a significant call comes in for service and we have to free up officers to respond.
Yeah, I mean, my goal is to be able to have that traffic enforcement and not, not reducing our response time, or reducing our response times. And so right now, you know, on current staffing levels, and we have daily versus nightly, what's the average staffing level during the day? Is it like average?
So, right now, in the Traffic Bureau, which I think is your specific concern, we have, we're all going to add, we have five people in training right now. We are going to start to add two more traffic officers to the Traffic Bureau once we get, hopefully, all five make it through training, and we get them on. So that's, that's going to be the first plan, is to address those traffic concerns. Chief Hillman knows it's a priority, and so we're going to take those first two bodies that get off training, we're going to put them on into the Traffic Bureau. We are, we are at 78 officers right now. There's really no formula for how many officers...
Eric, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you the question in a different way.
Okay.
More often, police department staffing is a ratio of, what, is it 1,000 citizens?
Correct.
And that's how, that's probably the first statistic that comes up in almost And, and that's how, that's probably the first statistic that comes up in almost any jurisdiction. What is the, the police ratio to citizens? And what is ours versus what is everybody else in the region?
So right now, we're about one per thousand. We have the population reporting about 78,000, and we're 78 officers allocated. I will offer that that, that formula, if you will, is a little bit of a.
I know it's kinda old school, but that's historically what, what the measure was.
Yeah, so it's, it's a huge, huge range, and it's obviously gonna be predicated on, you know, what your, the violence in your city looks like, what the calls for service dictate. All throughout a city, in our, not really in our region, but in the East Bay, there's a city, the city of about 106,000 people that has close to 200 officers. That's because they need those 200 officers because it's extremely, extremely busy and violent place. So that one per, one per thousand, or 1.5 per thousand, or 2.0 per thousand, is, is just a huge variable. If you look at a very large metropolitan area, especially on the East Coast, you're looking at maybe 4.5 or 5 per thousand. And it's just, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a slippery number, but yeah, that's, we're about 1.0 per thousand right now.
So am I off base by saying that we need, we, it would, we'd be beneficial adding more resources for that, or is it? I mean, that's, that's my, that's what I'm trying to find out here, is it, are we adequately staffed in your mind, or in, in PD's mind?
Well, a couple of things, you know, right now, we, we had a, we hopefully, in the next couple of months, will get to full staffing, 78. Right now, we're at 76. We haven't had full staffing in six and a half years, I think, something like that. We've actually been able to fill all the positions that were allocated. I would suggest that perhaps it'll be a good measure, a little bit down the road, to see where we're at in terms of, once we have all those officers on the street, and we also have, we've, we had an unfortunate rash of a lot of on-duty injuries, where we had a lot of people on workman's comp, that obviously is going to impact that number. We've been putting, you know, it's, it's been a challenge the last six to 12 months with all the injuries we've had, and because we have been, have not been able to hire all of our, fill all those positions. But I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna be able to fill those positions this calendar year, if not sooner. Hopefully, maybe before the fiscal year starts, and I think that'll give us a good, good idea of where we're at. The peak, pre-recession, we were allocated, I think, 93, and so we're allocated 78 now, if that helps answer that question.
So am I premature in asking for us to look at this and analyze it? Do you think you're comfortable saying, push this off and check it for next year?
So let me, my answer to your question, let me kinda go back to the mayor's, the 1.1.1 officer per thousand, or 1.5. I would suggest to you, there are better ways of looking at this. If we have 78 officers, this is what we can do. If, if we are allocated additional officers, rather than saying a number, 1.2 per thousand, 1.5 per thousand, what are those additional bodies going to do for the community? So I would offer that's probably a better measure of.
Okay, tell us.
Yeah.
My, my goal is, I, I really wanna focus on traffic enforcement. I wanna focus on, heavily on that, because that's where I feel like, cause we are a cut-through city. We're a pass-through from Granite Bay, Roseville into Eldorado. I mean, it's no secret that East Bidwell is just, it's getting worse by the day. And, I mean, how many motors do we have daily? I think three, that are on traffic enforcement?
Yeah, but Roger, did you go through and look in the, in the, in the budget? Did you look at all the other departments? The detectives, the, there's a bunch of them.
That's why this is so hard, is because you look through each, 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 and that's why I'm not ready to say, here we go, let's do it. I, I wanna know more.
But Roger, you've had, you've had the budget for two weeks.
Yeah, I know. But when you go, I mean, when you go through this and you start looking and analyzing everything, and then you hear from, you know, different things, and you hear from different people, you wanna look at every, every stone and leave. I don't wanna just say, hey, okay, fine. I'd like to know where we can make, you know, changes on it, and, and what things we can look at. And so it, just with this one, I mean specifically, if you're saying, and I'm not saying you have to speak for everybody, but if, if you think we're adequately staffed, and you're saying, no, it's fine, then that's it. But I, I wanted to, I wanted to look at, you know, options for increasing traffic enforcement. So I, I don't, I don't know why, I mean, two weeks isn't as much time as you might think, and maybe you're used to this, but running through a $200 million budget takes a little more than two weeks for me.
And it may be that I am used to it. I've been doing it for 20 years.
Maybe we could just also just take a step back, and I, I just wanted to remind the city council that Jim Francis and I put forward a budget that actually recommends no personnel increases across the board. It wasn't as if police was, was singled out in any way. There honestly, you know, in a perfect world, I would love to be presenting a budget. You can always take more police officers. I would always love to have more firefighters, you know. I'd love to have more, you know, solid waste truck drivers. I'd love to have more librarians, you know, planners, engineers. You can, you can go through the whole list, but.
Mostly engineers.
Mostly engineers, of course, Mayor Howell. But the, the fact remains, and Jim can help me with these numbers, but we ended up with a budget where we had just a, close to $300,000 in true discretionary money, $300,000. And that, that doesn't buy very much, and you have to focus on the one-time stuff. So it comes back to, and I hate to, you know, be that, you know, boring, broken record, but it does come back to, that's wonderful, would love to have more police officers, but we need to understand what are we not, what are we gonna take out to do that? Because we don't have an ongoing revenue stream to pay for ongoing additional personnel right now. Because right out of the gate, we had an extra $2.6 million PERS bill to pay that, you know, we had to cover before we could even get to the fun stuff. So that, that's, that's the challenge we're in. Just, just as a reminder to the group, I just don't wanna make anyone feel that, you know, police was singled out, or we don't want more officers. We just couldn't.
And that's what I'm getting to. And I, I, I appreciate all the work everyone does, and I'm not saying that PD is, is lacking or that, you know, we, we didn't incorporate PD. All I'm saying is that we have a little bit of time to look at this, and there's things that we all independently wanna look at and, and consider, and that's just one of the ones, so.
And, and I'm happy to wait two weeks, but when you come back, you need to be prepared to tell your colleagues where you wanna find the $400,000 for two cops, and the shade structures, or whatever it is that, that you wanna modify in the existing budget. You need to be prepared to come back and say what you're gonna cut out of the rest of the budget.
Yeah, and then I'm, I'm totally fine with that. And it may, it may be that there isn't anything we can cut, but those are the discussions that, you know, it, it's hard with this because they have to be here to have a lot of those, those discussions. It has to be on the dais, right? So when we talk about, when I go to Elaine and say, hey, I wanna look at this, I wanna look at that, it's, it's, it's tough. And so that's why, to your point, you know, hey, Roger, you had this for two weeks. Well, you know what? Sometimes we need more time for it. So, you know, I just, and I, you guys could pass this without me on board with it, and that's totally fine. But that's, I'm just saying I'd like to have a little more time with it for certain things, and I appreciate you stepping up and, and, you know, giving your, your opinion on it, and, you know, we can go from there.
I just wanna make sure that you, cause I asked the city manager about response times also ahead of time. If you look under the police tab, page 4-93, it shows the actual response times from 2017, 18, projected for 18, 19, and then budgeted. So they're actually going in the right direction. 17, 18, it was nine minutes, 34 seconds, including from the time they called, like you said. 18, 19, looks like it's gonna be about 8:46, and you're hoping for eight minutes and 30 seconds.
Right, and, and I will offer the response times also. January, or actually February of this year, we did a complete beat alignment, realignment. Now that we have South of 50, that's a whole, whole separate beat. But what we, what we, in our study, we found that in our five beats, there was a huge inordinate amount of calls for service in some beats, and a lot less than others. And by changing those beats, the actual geography of those beats, our response times are already starting to come down. And I think that's a, that's been a very positive thing. So it's, it's definitely on our radar. It's something that we're working at. Again, having those, once we get these trainees off of training and into police cars, that'll help us as well. But, you know, I don't think there's any chief on the planet that wouldn't say, sure, I could use more cops.
And, and I, and I think that there's a little bit more to this, because I think what Roger's really asking is, response times doesn't really have anything to do with anything. What he's talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, is he wants more cops on motorcycles hiding behind a tree at an intersection. And that's different, that's a very different thing from response times.
It's both. So, so in discussions with some command staff and the chief, it was discussing with, with response times. So I'm not making this out of thin air. It's something that I was told that, that is a concern, and that's why I wanted to look at it. Because we can't, I don't go to independent, you know, stuff comes up in conversations that you look at, and, you know, if I was, if this is your job is, is to look through this whole thing and put this together with Jim. And so, anyway, long story short, I just need more time on it, and PD is one of the focuses I wanna look at with resources in regards to response times and traffic enforcement. So I don't, I don't know what else more to say with that.
Public hearing, huh? Right? Isn't this a public hearing?
Yes.
Let's get to the public.
So we're gonna open the public hearing. I have no blue cards. Anybody wanna come forward and ask a question or state their opinion on anything?
We've bored almost everybody out of the room.
I think this is gonna be like three years in a row where we had absolutely no public comment on the budget. So without we will close the public hearing.
This always happens when I make a presentation, by the way. Everyone's relieved.
Okay, do we have, anybody wanna make a motion to do anything?
Given the opportunity to reflect on something, a question came to mind, and I think this may be for you. The, the line item for the Southeast Connector, is that funding specifically for that project? Or is that the gap-filling money if they don't get the additional funding from SACOG?
You're correct. The, the $3 million line item.
It's a loan, and it gets paid back.
Got it.
That would be a loan to say, to the Southeast Connector in the event that they don't get the additional funding they requested.
I was remembering that correctly. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I don't think this requires a motion. I, I'm more than happy to let people digest this a little longer. I would say personally, yeah, I would always love to have more police officers, but I really do appreciate the city staff and, and, you know, prior councils holding the line on, on hiring and being really thoughtful about adding new positions, because I think until we get to the peak of this, you know, PERS contribution, and we start to come back down the other direction, it's, it's really the fiscally responsible thing to do.
And, and the other thing I think that I'm gonna remind everybody, and, you know, Ernie knows this, cause he was here, and the staff knows this, but at the beginning of the last economic downturn, the city of Folsom had about 600 employees. So we are down significantly from what we were before, and in my personal opinion, all of the services in the city of Folsom, even despite those dramatic differences in the number of positions, have improved dramatically. So I think we need to keep, keep that in mind. We know what it's like to be bleeding the cost of staff and the associated benefits and retirement and all the rest of it. And we have an amazing staff at the city of Folsom, many of whom were here when those positions were shed. So, yeah, it's really super easy to go back to having way more employees than you, than you can really function with. And I'm gonna say again, I am so proud of the staff that we have had over the 21 years that I've been sitting here. And, you know, you can always have more people. I mean, you know, the, the police officers that are in the room tonight know that Chief Renaud went to a city that had, I don't know, three times more police officers or four times more than you guys do, and their budget, I think, just for their police department in Santa Monica, is like twice the city's budget, our entire city's budget. And they're, what, eight square miles? Something like that. So they must be driving gold-plated police cars down there or something. I don't know. So I'm happy to entertain a motion to put this off until the next council meeting.
I would motion to put this off until the next council meeting.
Okay, call roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Thank you.
But if anybody's got any questions, I'd appreciate getting that information into Elaine, because we need to get this budget passed at the next meeting. So if you have any questions or you need information, please contact staff and get it. And if the public has any questions or of us or staff, please contact us before the meeting on the 28th. And with that, we will move to city manager report.
Hello, everyone. Tomorrow is City Works Day in City Lions Park from 9:30 to noon, where you can hop into the cab of a Folsom garbage truck, climb aboard a fire engine, or meet police officers. This is a popular annual event where you get a chance to sample a wide variety of city programs, amenities, and services. So I hope you'll be there. Beginning Monday, May 20th, crews will begin resurfacing numerous Folsom roadways and bike trails with a slurry seal, which is applied to preserve and protect the pavement structure. Work will generally take place between Monday and Friday, 7:00 to 6:00 p.m. on residential streets and bike trails. And you can go to our website, folsom.ca.us/publicworksprojects to look at a slurry seal location map. We'll have a Waterwise workshop on Wednesday, May 29th, where you can learn about climate-appropriate, drought-tolerant, easy-care plants. That's May 29th, 6:30 to 8:30, right next door at the community center, and you can learn more at, on our website. And finally, I just wanted to share that we are, Rainbow Bridge Centennial Event was a resounding success. We had over 5,000 attendees out there, over 125,000 social media impressions. We were featured in 93 news stories, reaching nearly 1.5 million viewers. And our Slack liners set a Guinness Book of World Record. So very exciting time for Folsom.
Okay, Mike, council comments.
Three quick things. SACOG continues to work on developing the Green Means Go program, which effectively is asking the state to fill some funding gap so that the county or the SACOG region can meet its greenhouse gas emission goals. And Folsom led the charge in making a supporting resolution for that, so I'd like to thank my colleagues and everybody that's, that's continuing forward. I want to second your comment that the world needs more engineers. And I wanted to add to the comments about the, the bridge, the bridge event. First of all, the staff did a magnificent job. It was great, great fun. But I got to be the emcee of the bridge-building contest with popsicle sticks, and we have lots of really smart kids here in Folsom, and I hope that we don't have to wait.
Did you get any photos? I'd love to see those.
Oh, gosh, they were so good, too. The, the challenge was to take 200 popsicle sticks and one bottle of, regular-sized bottle of Elmer's glue, and make a bridge. And one of the, the team from Vista that ended up winning the thing managed to make a bridge that would hold 177 pounds before it failed. Which is kinda hard to believe unless you saw it in person. But I, the point of this is that the world does need more engineers, and a STEM event like that, we should try and do that every year, regardless of whether the Rainbow Bridge turns 100 or not, or 200, as the case may be.
Or just have a birthday celebration every year.
Yeah, 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 have a bridge-building contest every year. We can find some other science projects for people to do that are fun. Thank you very much.
Is that all you got?
That's it.
Roger?
I am quiet tonight. I just, I did wanna reiterate that the bridge ceremony was amazing. So congratulations to you and your staff. You guys did a fantastic job. I, I don't think I've gotten as many compliments as I've ever gotten at an event that staff's put on as that one was. So it was, it was great. Thank you.
Any news from AQMD?
Not this time, no, thanks.
Ernie?
Again, kudos to the staff. I mean, it was great. We did, we did a lot, had a lot of fun. I saw a lot of kayaks down there. Now, I believe the lady that told me there's a 300-member kayak club, I believe it's probably true. And it was, it was really nice. And the, the gentleman that walked the wire, and I met his family, his whole family, his mom with a broken leg, and his dad, and his brothers and uncles and everybody, they were very good, too. Great to have people like that in Folsom. So, thank you, staff.
Sarah?
Well, first, I will apologize for my tardiness. My daughter was being recognized at the Vista Senior Awards Night, so didn't wanna miss that, but I appreciate you indulging me. Also, I, I thought the Rainbow Bridge was a fabulous day. I actually think, Carrie, you drew the short straw having to go to Washington, DC, because we had a great time. And the evening event on the bridge was also fantastic, so thank you to the Historic District Association for, for planning that. Just one thing about my last LAFCO meeting that may be of interest. The city of Elk Grove was there with a sphere of influence application, which was approved. They, it's about 500 acres that they're, they're expanding their sphere, but the city of Elk Grove owns 100 of those acres, and they are making plans for a very large soccer complex, up to 16 fields, so that, you know, they could host tournaments and stuff. So it could be kind of interesting for the region.
Okay, and I wanna thank Sarah for taking over the ceremonies at the bridge while I was gone. But you are correct, I did draw the short straw, and I was representing the city and the region on a lobbying trip to Washington, DC, cap to cap, me and 350 of my closest friends. But I was, most of my activity was actually related to trying to get some additional funding, and where funding is not available because earmarks don't technically exist anymore, it was a function of getting support for the grant application that the Southeast Connector has. Already submitted to the DOT. We met with the DOT, we met with Harris's office and a number of other agencies, the FHWA, to get support for the project, because the next phase of construction is in Folsom, and it's $20 million, and we are still short $2.5 to $3 million on that. So that would help to backfill some of that funding. That, and we're hoping we're still trying to make our way with SACOG. Had the opportunity to talk to a few people about what's going on at SACOG. Had the opportunity to talk to a few people about what's going on at SACOG. So we think that meeting went well. There's not a lot going on with regional sand. Construction still continues at, for the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant. STA is still seeing all of the presentations from throughout the region on the unfunded transportation needs, which gets to SB1, gets to my concern about what the governor's office is going to do about transportation funds related to affordable housing, gets to the money that RT is also trying to go after. They, at the board meeting last night, they're going, they're basically trying a combination of things. The city of Sacramento is going to kick in a million dollars to the RT budget, and they're going to allow K-12 students to ride the buses within the service area for free, if they attend or live within the city of Sacramento. I think part of the thought process there is that the buses are moving around anyway, so you might as well have more kids on it, and that teaches them that maybe public transit is not such a horrible thing, and maybe that turns into a lifestyle. RT is in the process of approving their budget, which I think will happen at the next RT board meeting, which would be two weeks from last night. And I think that's all my other extraneous regional committees and commissions. Still seeing a lot of people that are speeding, running red lights, out walking around in the dark, in black. In fact, on the morning that I was going to the airport at 5 o'clock in the morning, or quarter to 5:00 in the morning, to go to International, to go to D.C., I was driving down Blue Ravine, there was someone wearing all-black clothes, with the exception of a white stripe on what appeared to be a tracksuit, on a skateboard, in the middle of Blue Ravine, not even remotely close to an intersection. So I called it in, hopefully one of you guys went and, you know, put that idiot in an[1702.83]